Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is made available through cooperation with the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission meets on the first and third Thursdays of each month. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The planning meeting agenda is posted on the city's website at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Reciting over today's meeting, Barbara Lomas.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of January 21st, 2016.
So you can say you're here.
Thank you. If we could close the doors. I have a short little statement to read. If, excuse, in order to comply with applicable fire regulations, standing in the chamber is not permitted. But we don't have those. Shall we go ahead and skip it? All right, we don't have to. So, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Lomas.
Here.
Commissioner Rudnick.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Commissioner Strong.
Here.
Commissioner Tack. Commissioner Wade.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you. Before we begin, I request that you turn off all cell phones as a courtesy to others and to limit interference to our audio and video broadcast. For safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in council chambers. Also, please be courteous in the use of any still cameras or video equipment. Thank you for your consideration. I would like to call attention and welcome Commissioner Rudnick, our newest Commissioner.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I would like to thank Councilmen Weir and the council for allowing me this opportunity to serve. In the hundred years that the Rudnick family has been in the community, we have seen the town grow from a little more than Colonel Bakersfield to now the ninth-largest city in the state. I look forward to working with members of the community, our excellent planning staff, in helping Bakersfield grow into a greater city in the future.
Thank you, and again, welcome. Item number four on our agenda this evening is public statements. We will now receive public statements. This time is reserved for anyone wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the consent calendar, public hearings, or public hearing portions of the agenda. If you are here on item 6A through 6C or 7A, the recirculated draft EIR for the 24th Street Improvement Project, this is not the time to speak. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission on a matter not on the consent calendar, public hearing, or public hearing portions of the agenda? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing no one, we will now move on to consent calendar, non-public hearing. Does any commissioner wish to remove a consent calendar, non-public hearing item for separate consideration? Seeing no one, may I have a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the non-public hearing items?
I'll make that motion to adopt.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Second.
And Commissioner.
Strong.
Strong. This is a roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Rudnick.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Strong.
Aye.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll now move on to consent calendar, public hearing items. The purpose of this section is to vote on all of the consent calendar, public hearing items in one motion without further comment unless an item is removed by the commission or someone in the audience who wishes to speak on an item. If anyone wishes to speak on a consent calendar, public hearing item, the item must first be removed from this portion of the agenda. Any items removed will be heard in order. At this time, I will open all of the consent calendar, public hearing items. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on a consent calendar, public hearing item? Again, this is not the time to take testimony. Seeing no one, does any commissioner wish to remove an item? Then at this time, the public hearing on all of the consent calendar, public hearing items is now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the consent calendar, public hearing items?
Motion.
Thank you. Do we need a second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Rudnick.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Strong.
Aye.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. We will now move to Agenda Item 7, Public Hearings. Now is the time to hear the public hearing item. The only item on tonight's public hearing agenda is the Taking of Public Comments on the Recirculated Draft EIR for the 24th Street Improvement Project, which includes improvements to the 24th Street Corridor, State Route 178, from just west of State Route 99 to just east of M Street. I want to explain a little bit about the background of the project's approval and why we are here tonight. In 2014, the city council certified the EIR for the project. After it was certified, a local citizens' group legally challenged the adequacy and completeness of the EIR. In July 2015, the court ruled that the EIR was deficient in that, number one, the project description and environmental analysis of the EIR did not adequately include six additional cul-de-sacs requested by local residents, for a total of eight cul-de-sacs. And number two, the EIR did not adequately and completely consider and analyze the eight potentially feasible alternatives considered but eliminated from further discussion. As required by the court, the city council decertified the EIR in September 2015. The recirculated draft EIR at issue tonight was prepared to revise and supplement the EIR with the information required by the court. Only those portions of the EIR that have been modified are being recirculated by the city. Comments given tonight should be limited to those modifications included in the recirculated draft EIR. Many of you have already provided comments and suggestions on the document directly to the city. Of course, you are free to provide your comments and suggestions again here tonight. The comments received tonight and comments you have already provided will be responded to in the final EIR. For those of you that wish to comment tonight, your comments are being taken down by a court reporter and will be provided to the city staff for response. To ensure that your comments are taken down accurately, the court reporter needs you to speak clearly and slowly and state your name and address. Remember to speak into the microphone and do not speak at the same time as someone else. We may also need to take periodic breaks to give the court reporter an opportunity to After everyone has had the opportunity to comment on the project, the public hearing will be closed, and comments will be provided to city staff for consideration and response. The CEQA public comment period will remain open until February 25th, 2016, so you can continue to submit your written comments to the city up until that time. Staff has recommended that at the conclusion of the public hearing tonight, all comments be forwarded to city staff for responses and for preparation for the final EIR. The city council will decide whether to certify the final EIR and approve the project. So, now that I've explained the process to you, I will ask staff to provide us with a presentation on the project before I open the public hearing.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lomas. You've done a great job setting the background and the backdrop and explaining this project, its past history. We know it's been before, the commission and the council in the past, and a portion of the project is now before us again. But I would like to stress and remind that there is no action for your commission tonight. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to conduct an adequacy hearing on the recirculated portions of the EIR. What that means is that the city has policies in place for every CEQA document which require us to have a hearing whenever there's a circulating document, to provide the public an opportunity to come, hear a brief presentation about the project, and provide any comments that they would like to provide. Again, the commission is taking no action tonight other than accepting those comments and then providing them to staff, and then staff will come back at a later time after the public circulation period is over with responses to those comments. However, no comments would be provided tonight. Normally, I would be the one providing the overview of the project. However, since this project is a transportation-related project, our Public Works Department has taken the lead on the preparation of this, and therefore, our Public Works Director, Mr. Nick Fiddler, is here to provide the presentation. Planning staff and all other usual staff are also here for any questions of your commission if they come up later. And I'll hand it over to Mr. Fiddler.
Sorry, just a second. Got a little trigger happy. Vice Chair Lomas and Commissioners, I am Nick Fiddler, Public Works Director for the City of Bakersfield. I have the honor tonight to present the Recirculated Draft Environmental Impact Report for the 24th Street Improvement Project. A little background, as been stated, the City of Bakersfield, as the lead agency under the California Environmental Quality Act, has prepared the Recirculated Draft Environmental Impact Report, referred to as the RDEIR, for the 24th Street Improvement Project in response to the Superior Court's rulings. The RDEIR is being circulated for public review, started in January 11th, 2016, and is to come to an end on February 25th, 2016. The public hearing tonight is an opportunity for the public and Planning Commission to provide comments regarding the RDEIR only. The project description, this project improves 24th Street from west of State Route 99 to .2 miles east of M Street. In general, the project proposes to widen, realign, and re-strive 24th Street from west of State Route 99 to east of M Street, and realign/restrive 23rd Street from west of C Street to east of M Street. In addition, the improvements will include adding auxiliary lane on northbound State Route 99, expanding the Oak and 24th Street intersection, widening 24th Street to six lanes between Olive Street and D Street, and widening the 23rd and 24th Street couplet to eight lanes from D Street to M Street. That's adding one lane in each direction along 23rd and 24th Street. You can see on the map below, a limit shown basically on the west of 99 all the way to just into 178 to the east. The purpose of the revised, recirculated draft environmental impact report was per the Superior Court's direction. We evaluated six proposed cul-de-sacs as part of the project and their potential impacts on the historic district south of 24th Street. In addition, we were requested to provide additional evaluation of the eight alternatives considered but eliminated in the final environmental impact report using the following criteria. First, environmental impacts. This criteria, environmental, will the alternative avoid substantially lessen the significant environmental impacts of the projects as proposed? The second criterion, project objectives. Will the alternative attain most or all of the basic project objectives? The third criterion, feasibility. Is the alternative potentially feasible? And the fourth and final criterion is reasonableness. Is the alternative reasonable and realistic? We evaluated each one of those criterion for each one of the eight alternatives, and if it meets the criteria, it was carried forward. If it fails to meet one or more of the criteria, it was eliminated from detailed analysis. As part of the document, the summary of findings, we found that the six added cul-de-sacs were found to have no significant adverse effects on the visual environmental along the 24th Street alignment, found not to have a significant adverse impact on historic resources under CEQA, was found not to require additional mitigation, and not result in substantial changes to the project's impacts on the environmental resources. In addition, there was no additional mitigation measures have been proposed, and widening 24th Street to the north remains the recommended project. On the screen, you'll see a schedule of past events, a chronology of the environmental document to date, and as you can see, the completion of the Recirculated Draft Environmental Impact Report was submitted January 11th, 2016, and the comment period will end February 25th, 2016. The completion of the final impact report is yet to be determined. The next steps in the process was, public review will end February 25th. All comments that pertain specifically to the Recirculated Draft Environmental Impact Report will be responded to and included in the final environmental impact report. The city council will then consider certifying the final environmental impact report and approving the recommended project. The city thanks you and appreciates your interest in attending this public hearing.
Thank you for your presentation. Any more staff comments? Thank you. At this time, I will open the public hearing on this item and ask those who wish to comment to come forward to the microphone. Everyone that wishes to comment will have the opportunity to do so, but please be courteous to others who wish to speak, and please try not to repeat the remarks of previous speakers. You may pose questions during your comments. The Planning Commission and staff do not have, will not answer them tonight. And if you wish to leave your documents with the Planning Commission for review, please feel free to provide those to the clerk at the conclusion of your comments. Before we begin speaking, please state your name and your address. May we have the first speaker?
My name is Tony Insalibahere. I live at 2424 Pine Street. My comments are lengthy, but I thought I'd just hit the highlights here tonight for the benefit of the audience. First of all, we're asking, I'm asking here, why there are no references to coordinating traffic lights as an alternative? Why has there not been any evaluation of the effect of one-way streets? This EIR breaks the project up into four different segments, which kind of creates a piecemeal approach to analyzing the alternatives. That creates a number of problems. The EIR talks about a $46 million cost, but the city council's been told $65 million, and it's not clear if the cul-de-sacs are included in any of these costs. The Bakersfield system study identified 20 possible regional alternatives, but why was the public the last to decide on the six alternatives used? And how do we know what was presented on the 20 alternatives? The report, it makes a big deal about the 12 busiest arterial roads in Bakersfield, but they're using daily totals, and the EIR and the analysis, they all use peak traffic totals, so the daily totals really aren't relevant to the EIR, and I'm not sure why that's even included. Speaking of traffic, the traffic volumes have not met the forecasts or anywhere close to it. We've got a calculation here that I'm submitting where they're 44% wrong. I mean, traffic has not grown as that was projected in the EIR, and I don't know how you can do an analysis without correct numbers. I mean, it's proven to be wrong. There's a whole thing about traffic time study, but there's no support for any of the traffic time study calculations, where those numbers came from or how they arrived at. There's a reference to a future debt of the city of $200 million. As far as we can tell, that doesn't exist. There isn't really a $200 million future traffic debt. That should probably be clarified in the report. The talk about the re-striping alternative isn't in accordance with design manual standards, yet there's been numerous projects around the city, Centennial Corridor, Stockdale Highway, Truxton Avenue Extension, where they have been re-striped not to design manual standards. How were they overcome? And why wasn't some attempt made to straighten out the S-curve and try to come at something that would be acceptable like those other projects? The report claims that re-striping would cost $30 million, but there's no explanation of why re-striping would cost $30 million. I mean, the whole project's supposed to cost $46 million, so that doesn't make sense. Hagaman flyover. The 1986 study claimed that the Hagaman flyover would reduce traffic on 24th Street by 14,000 vehicles a day in 1986 population numbers. Would this number now be higher due to the population increase in the northwest? It would seem like that should have been looked at. Traffic has not grown as forecasted. The growth in the northwest exceeded expectation, and the need for the Hagaman flyover supersedes the need for the 24th Street widening and may actually eliminate the need for the project There's no real data in the report showing how many people in northwest currently use 24th Street to commute downtown. The opening of the West Park Freeway has relieved the 24th Street traffic. That's why the forecasts are wrong, is because people are taking Truxton instead of 24th Street. So the Hagaman flyover would probably do the same. That deserves some analysis. And the population growth, they used a population growth between 2000 and 2009. Well, that was the boom times. It probably should have looked at population growth over 60 years or so because the population growth since 2010 has not been the same. The growth rate between 2000 and 2009 was somewhat of an anomaly and probably shouldn't have been used in the EIR. Those are the highlights of my comments, and I'll give the clerk the full detail. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our next speaker.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. My name is Vanessa Van Gill. My home is on A Street, 2224 A Street in Westchester. For over 35 years, I have opposed this project, and am now a proud proponent of the Citizens Against the 24th Street Widening Projects lawsuit filed against the City of Bakersfield and Caltrans. I believe the new EIR is inadequate, and will be submitting additional comments and key points at a later date. These are my arguments and questions this evening. Regarding criteria, in this court-ordered revision of the now decertified FEIR, I am asking, was the 24th Street widening project analyzed and evaluated under the same criteria as the other eight alternatives? One example being social feasibility. In regards to the cul-de-sacs, in the RDEIR on page 111, it visually illustrates what the completed cul-de-sacs with aesthetic improvements would look like. Is the city financially prepared to pay for and maintain all the elements depicted in this photograph? Excuse me. Oh, excuse me, as part of the completed project? And importantly, why do you keep circumventing the state historic preservation officer's evaluation of the cul-de-sacs? Point three, in regards to alternatives. The 2011 supplemental project study report for the widening project identified two feasible approaches to achieving the project's goals. Widening 24th Street on the north side, Alternative 1, or the south side, Alternative 2. The conclusion of my research is this. Alternatives 1 and 2, for all intents and purposes, should be considered one alternative with a Plan A and a Plan B. My evidence to support this determination is based on the environmental impact reports of other Caltrans projects throughout California. Please explain and back up why this project was the exception to my findings. Additionally, in 2008, the Department of Transportation required the city to evaluate three alternatives and the no-build alternative. You did not comply, having identified only two feasible approaches to the project's goals. Based on these two arguments and the city's non-compliance with the Department of Transportation, would it be a CEQA violation if you did not go back and include one, if not two, additional viable alternatives in the final environmental impact report? Now in regards to the sound walls on the north side of the project, the decertified FEIR failed to propose legally adequate mitigation measures for this project. The city and Caltrans failed to adopt mitigation measures that were fully enforceable. CEQA's specific requirements for mitigation measures are intended to ensure those measures are enforceable and are actually implemented. CEQA prohibits public agencies from approving projects with significant impacts, excuse me, with significant environmental impacts unless all feasible mitigation measures to minimize these impacts are adopted. CEQA defines mitigation broadly as measures to avoid, minimize, rectify, or compensate for significant environmental impacts. Mitigation measures must be fully enforceable, either through conditions of approval or through incorporation into a project itself. Where feasible mitigation measures exist, a public agency cannot approve a project without specifically finding that legal adequate measures have been incorporated into the project. An agency must also adopt a mitigation, monitoring, and reporting plan to ensure that measures are actually implemented following project approval. If mitigation isn't feasible, the agency must make a specific finding to this effect and must adopt a statement of overriding consideration before it can approve the project. It is undisputed that the project may result in a substantial permanent increase in ambient noise levels. Based on this fact, Caltrans and the city proposed noise abatement measures in the form of sound walls. However, in the FEIR, the city and Caltrans reserve the right to forego installation of this mitigation measure if, quote, "conditions have substantially changed." The FEIR also noted that the physical characteristics of the noise abatement described must be subject to change or refinement by the project's development team and/or the City of Bakersfield. In any event, the Noise Abatement Decision Report conducted for the project includes a, quote, "maintenance provision," which requires that 100% of the affected property owners must be in favor of these sound walls in order for them to be constructed. In addition, the affected property owners must enter into contracts with the city to accept aesthetic maintenance responsibility for their respective portion of the barrier completion. Both the reservation of the right to forego installation of the sound walls as well as the maintenance provision mandating unanimous property owner support fails to comply with CEQA's mandate that mitigation measures must be fully enforceable and actually implemented. Yet again, these are two potential examples of CEQA violations. The question is, without the sound walls, would the Federal Highway Administration approve and sign off on this project? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker?
Good evening.
Good evening, commission members. My name is Robert Braley. I live at 905 Montclair Street here in Bakersfield. I think we can all agree that the purpose of any road project should have a goal of improving traffic flow, safety, reduce emissions, and other reasons. In some instances, increasing traffic lanes, increasing lanes of traffic can improve flow if nothing else. This project does nothing to achieve any of the goals. Another, and far, far better way to improve nearly every single goal is to reduce volume. The project does not reduce volume. This report says, states, "This corridor is congested and creates a bottleneck." The trouble is, there is neither. Congestion, in my mind, involves stop-and-go traffic over an open section of roadway uninterrupted by traffic control devices due only to sheer volume of traffic, such as Los Angeles freeways. In recent court filings, the city said it takes six to eight minutes to travel from Oak Street East to B Street. If this were anywhere near accurate, I would agree that there would be congestion, but is blatantly not true. I travel 23rd and 24th frequently each week to reach the Fairfax area. For the last five or six months, I have traveled these routes many, many times in both directions and carefully timed the drive on many trips. Travel east, traveling east on 24th Street from Oak Street, regardless of time of day or traffic conditions, heavy or light, it takes just about one minute to reach B Street. There is no bottleneck or congestion, as I define above, and traffic moves smoothly at all times. From Oak Street to M Street, traveling east on 24th and 23rd with properly synchronized lights, it takes about three minutes. Lights on both streets are not properly and consistently synchronized frequently for some odd reason. Eastbound F Street is the biggest problem, as it is seldom synchronized with Oak Street. Traveling west on 23rd with properly synchronized light is the same three minutes from M to Oak as it is eastbound, but F is less an issue. A really interesting thing is that, traveling east from Oak, I can reach Fairfax consistently in eight minutes or less, the same time your staff, it says, takes to get to B Street from Oak Street. This is consistent. All of these times are consistent every single trip, regardless of daytime trips. So the critical factor is not how many lanes there are, but whether the lights are synchronized. A very simple, cheap solution. I ask, have any of you or any staff member actually studied the traffic times by getting in your cars and driving between Oak and M Street, both east and westbound, and timing the drives at various times of the day? Have any staff or you made a study of the effect of properly synchronized lights? How often the lights are or are not synchronized? Have you or staff actually driven this corridor and made note of how traffic moves rather than rely on what you think it is like? If not, I suggest each of you do so and that staff be required to do so, and not just once or twice, but many times. How you can decide something otherwise. By adding a lane of traffic, there is no way whatever that you're going to improve traffic, travel through downtown. There is no congestion, there is no bottleneck. This project is not needed. Widening 23rd and 24th is not going to relieve traffic issues now or in the future. The only solution now or in the future is decrease volume. This project is not going to change patterns, is not going to disrupt, is only going to disrupt a neighborhood with the same number of cars, same noise, same air pollution, but with the added ugliness of sound walls, no safety improvements, possible safety degradation due to the lack of egress because of the cul-de-sacs, and emergency response delay. Hagaman, on the other hand, will provide volume relief, though poo-pooed by the report, even though the traffic figures used are over 20 years old, which will provide relief from the above. Nearly all recent growth has been in the northwest, which is where relief is needed, where Hagaman is located, and why Hagaman is needed. To say Hagaman is already approved and does not fit into their plans to relieve downtown is absurd. Be willing to alter plans to achieve goals with new information. Hagaman now fits the goal of what is needed to be done now. Volume relief to Rosedale Highway, 23rd, 24th, which is by far the best solution to the goals stated above. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are other speakers, I'd encourage you to come sit in the front row so we can...
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Lamar Kerley, K-E-R-L-E-Y. I've lived at 2801 20th Street for 27 years. I've been to probably a dozen meetings of this nature over the years while the debate about this street has gone on and on and on. I'm here this evening to address the one subject that's pertinent, the cul-de-sacs. I would say 95% of the neighborhood is very pleased with the cul-de-sacs. It's done a remarkable job of making our neighborhood quiet and peaceful. It's a residential neighborhood. The cul-de-sacs, which I've been a proponent of for the 27 years I've lived there, have done what they were supposed to do. They've cut the traffic from cutting through the neighborhood during periods of high-traffic volume. They're not pretty-looking now, but that's understood, that they're going to be changed once they do the 24th Street expansion. I just want to say it's certainly one of the issues that was addressed by Mr. Fidler was the reasonableness factor. If you look at 24th Street, what we're talking about is less than a mile through that neighborhood, and we have all of the freeway going to the east, that is, a freeway. We're expanding Rosedale to three lanes going to the west, and we have a mile that needs to be expanded. Obviously, it's not reasonable to prevent this from happening. So I'm just simply saying that there are many people who are proponents of this, and the ones who are obstinate are going to continue to be obstinate and just have to be dealt with. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Bob Coons. I'm a 45-year resident at 22nd and A. We have all seen the commercials for possible cures for whatever ails you, and then see all the possible negative side effects that could result from those applications. Our common reaction is that we would be crazy to take that drug. Likewise, tonight, we should analyze the cure being proposed for 24th Street. The simple coordination of traffic lights on 24th Street and the signage on 178 directing traffic to Highway 99 via 204 should be the first step in eliminating this problem. For years, and on the recent 2012 EIR comments, the great majority of citizens agreed that State Route 204 was their preference. In this recent EIR, to take that option, to take off that option because it is already accepted as part of the Thomas Roads Plan is ill-considered. It was also stated that diverting traffic to the Hagaman flyover located three miles away is inefficient because of a greater distance. This is highly debatable. People today use 204 to the northwest areas to consistently save 10 to 12 minutes in travel time on the existing roadways. Why would anyone choose a more life-threatening option, operation, 24th Street, over a less-invasive alternative, 204? We are being sold on anticipated problems. For 40 years, the forecasts have not met projected expectations and have not resulted in the dire consequences anticipated. People are smarter than the formulas that are being used to predict their behavior. They choose the best time-sensitive routes that are available to them and make minor adjustments to continue their lives efficiently. An example of creating an unnecessary environmental problem is the recent widening of 405 Freeway in Los Angeles. Upon its completion, it only created greater traffic problems and resulted in an additional 21 minutes added to the previous commuting time. $71 million is the total expected income for the city of Bakersfield for the 2015-16 budget year. Spending $40 million on 24th Street, which is approximately 56% of our totally yearly income on this one roadway of approximately one mile, to reduce the travel time by one minute is fiscally irresponsible. This is not monopoly money. This is money that every citizen of Bakersfield has contributed. I think, like the commercials, the citizens of Bakersfield would be crazy to accept this cure. There is a reason why a well-respected judge ordered that the EIR be reviewed to address major concerns about this problem and this project. I hope that the Planning Commission and the City Council members consider the cost and the effects of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, staff, and community members. My name's Judith Harmon, and I live north of 24th Street at 2405. I have consistently been opposed to this project, and the main reason being is, is the logic is flawed. In reviewing the revised EIR, FEIR, I look at comments, and they reference Segment 3, which is where I live, and it notes that the road will be moved north by 17 feet. It also notes that it would actually increase safety issues because there would be 11 driveways eliminated that back up onto 24th Street. Part of my concern here is that, while they know the safety that they are creating by removing driveways, this document fails to note that there are additional driveways that will be located right on the curb return that have driveways on the south side, meaning that it will put every single resident in danger that has a driveway on the south side. It seems contradictory to me that they fail to put this information in. In addition, the document also talks about an alternative where there was a consideration of a frontage road. What I find particularly interesting is that, while they know that it will be expensive because it would mean the additional acquisition of properties, I want to know why. Was the addition of consideration of a frontage road considered? Frontage roads' purposes in the basic form are to create safety. They have taken that option away. I understand that cost is a consideration, but also please recognize the safety of the people that do live and abut against this project. In addition, one of the other considerations was widening both sides. And within that consideration, they noted that, on the screening evaluation, that they didn't want to do it because it would bring the road closer to existing structures. Is that not what they're proposing to do now? I'm just bringing forward some inconsistencies tonight to show you that the document really needs to be reconsidered. I encourage each of you, while you cannot have any comment tonight, is to really become informed about this project and think critically about the impact and value that it actually provides. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Valerie Munoz, and I've lived in Westchester for approximately 45 years. And when you talk to reasonableness, let's talk about this. We're going to do this Donald Trump style. Is it reasonable to open up the earth and expose 90-plus years of spores into the atmosphere? Bakersfield, if you think you have a breathing problem now, just wait. You know, it's the, yeah, the cul-de-sacs, if you've driven up and down 24th Street and you've seen how they look, they're not pretty, and the promise of them to be beautified is not set in stone. So, you know, this isn't about the obstinance of the people of Westchester. I feel like I speak for many in Westchester who believe the obstinance is with the Bill Thomas Roads Improvement Project. You know who we are, we know who you are. Take your bulldozers out of Westchester. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Madam Chairwoman, fellow commissioners, staff, and fellow community members. My name is Wayne Kress. My wife, Leslie Walters, and I are 30-year residents of 2224 Myrtle Street. Since the original draft EIR of the 24th Street Improvement Project was first circulated nearly four years ago, Leslie and I felt this project to be inevitable. Improving traffic movement through 24th Street has been discussed under various scenarios for decades. However, this time, it is part of the much larger Thomas Road Improvement Program, which has funding, by the way, and this time, it can be viewed as one segment of a citywide traffic circulation plan, a crucial segment. And this time, Leslie and I see it as much more than a simple street widening project. We see it as an opportunity to make our neighborhood safer by adding the cul-de-sacs, and we see it as an opportunity to greatly improve the view corridor from Highway 99 into downtown Bakersfield. So we endorsed the 24th Street Improvement Project from the beginning, conditioning our approval upon including the cul-de-sacs and landscaping 24th Street to the hilt. We discovered many of our neighbors, no, no, scratch that, most of our neighbors felt the same as we did. So we all came together, adopted a theme, do it right, do it now, and christened our idea with the name, the Westchester Parkway, a good image behind you. As I said, most of our neighbors endorsed this thinking, but not all. A very small but vocal minority advocated leaving 24th Street just the way it is, urging instead routing traffic around 24th Street by diverting it to State Route 204, then over Highway 99 via the Hagaman flyover. They fought the EIR you adopted last year, saying it did not give their idea due consideration. And last summer, Judge Twissman agreed with them. So here we are, commenting on the do-over, the recirculated draft EIR. To Leslie and me, and to our do-it-right, do-it-now group, this new draft gave their idea plenty of consideration, adequate consideration, in our view. As it turns out, both the 24th Street Improvement Project and the Hagaman Flyover Project are significant elements of the citywide traffic circulation plan. It's not an either-or situation, both are needed. So we urge you to support staff's recommendation and adopt this recirculated draft EIR, and we urge you to get on with building this project. Thank you.
My name's Mike Hawxworth. I live at 2212 Myrtle Street, and I apologize in advance that I'm not as organized as everybody here, but I'm going to shoot from the cuff, Mike Hawxworth style. I have a delivery business in town that logs a million miles a year plus for the last 10 years in Bakersfield. I own three properties south of 24th Street. I have two properties that abut the project and the cul-de-sac. I have a tenant that has taken pictures of the stopped traffic that would disable somebody making it from Oak to V Street. making it from Oak to V Street in one minute. I challenged the argument of the landscaping that's pictured above you right there because I attended the City Council Open House to discuss this project and the landscaping specifically that's above you and the rendering. And two out of the three people from the community that showed up are in the room. One of them just spoke before me, and the other one stands before you. So we are confident in the ability of this city, yourselves, Trip, and everybody involved that the rendering above is going to be pretty close to what the project looks like when it's done. Now, I may be wrong. As I said, I'm not prepared. But I believe that there was two items in the EIR that the judge said to look at. So I'm hoping, and I believe that our officials in charge of this have actually done that job and will render the EIR adequate, and I would encourage you all to vote on it. I believe that one thing that should be looked at is KernCOG's estimates of traffic through this city for their existence and the accuracy of their estimates of traffic through the city. In the course of the many meetings I've been to on this project, I was subject to a document some time ago that indicated that KernCOG's estimates are very, very close in their 10-year projections every year for the last several decades. So I think that's something else that everybody should look at. Other than that, I'm just encouraging you guys all to push this thing forward. My understanding is we've spent a half a million dollars stopping it, so we're not saving any money arguing about it. And I would agree with Mr. Kress that the majority of the residents, although they're not all here today, would say, "Let's move forward." Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I live at 3301 Columbus Avenue, and I work here in downtown Bakersfield. I believe the recirculated EIR is woefully inadequate for one reason. Pursuant to Public Resources Code 21166, there's been changes in the environment and circumstances that merit further study of the environment and baseline conditions here in Bakersfield, particularly proposed downtown development in light of the high-speed rail. Already, we have the city circulating requests for proposals for not only station development, but what's called transit-oriented development, which is higher-density development. This development is... Needs to be studied in the recirculated EIR because it's part of the cumulative impact analysis, and that's not being studied in this EIR. We also have proposed future development of the Norhills Mall. People attending, going to that mall or the reinvention of that mall are going to have to take this corridor again and get there. So all those traffic impacts have to be studied in this EIR as well. I also contend that the city should have done a health assessment study the first time around, considering the, as a previous person stated, the increase in traffic volumes that are proposed, considering the commercial traffic. We need a traffic study to study these diesel trucks that are coming through the neighborhood and causing cancer, causing particulate matter to be spread around. We need a health assessment study, particularly because of the sensitive receptors in the area. Also, I would like to say that the city's acquisition of properties for the project already has pre-committed the city to this project and has foreclosed alternatives and has made this process a post hoc rationalization for action already taken. I believe it legitimizes the process, and I also believe it has foreclosed informed decision-making. Later on, I'll submit my comments to the written comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Tomas Del Toro Diaz, and I live on 2323 Beach Street in Bakersfield. I'm also a proponent of the "Do it right, do it now" philosophy, and I'm here on behalf of Beach Street to support the project. I think it's an important thing for our community, for the economy, especially in light of recent oil prices. I think we have a need as a community to continue through with this project, and the faster we do it, the faster the vacant houses can be removed and vagrants no longer entering our properties and our community. And so, in closing, I would say that we appreciate all your efforts, especially Mr. Fidler and his team, for everything that they've done, and hopefully we can get this passed through and completed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
May I speak again?
Counselor? Yes.
May I speak again?
Yes. Please come to the microphone, state your name.
Yes, my name is Vanessa Van Gell. I would like to set the facts straight about the number of citizens in Bakersfield who oppose the project versus the citizens that are in favor of the project. I have petitions with signatures from citizens representing every zip code, every one of your wards in Bakersfield, and round number of the people opposing the project for 24th Street is 650. In stark contrast, the peoples, the "Do it right, do it now" group, their petition, round numbers, doing this from memory, is approximately 230. That is significantly less than 650. At the Planning Commission meeting, speakers opposing 24th Street were a number of 23. People in favor of the widening, seven speakers. At the concurrent City Council meeting, seven people spoke opposing 24th Street, one spoke in favor. So I want to clear up the misconception that it's a handful of residents and citizens that oppose this project. The numbers I gave you, you can fact-check it if you'd like, but they are true and accurate. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking for anyone else who'd like to speak? Seeing no one, this is referred to staff. Staff, have any comment?
We do need to close the hearing by Chair Lomas. Thank you.
And we will close our public hearing on this environmental impact report.
Thank you.
We'll move on to communications. Ms. Kitchen?
Thank you.
I do have one small communication. It recently became to our attention that the California League of Cities will be hosting a training session for planning commissioners. It's to be hosted out of town in March, and so I have some materials for you if you'd like to look over and take interest in that on your own personal time. So I have these available here if you'd like that. Other than that, I have no communications. Oh, and I'd also like to welcome Commissioner Rudnick. We look forward to having you on the commission. Thank you.
I'm just going to... What city is the training?
It's located in San Ramon.
Okay. Thank you. Onto Commissioner's comments. Seeing none, we're adjourned. Oh, well, hold on, hold on. Commissioner Schwartz.
I know the public hearing is closed, but I'd like to just make one comment. Whether you're for or against the 24th Street widening, I think there were some comments that I thought were worthwhile, both for and against. But a couple of things that were mentioned that I know our city is not doing, like, for instance, synchronizing the roads and exploring one-way streets. Whether we approve it or not, there are good ideas on both sides, and they should be explored in the future to help relieve traffic congestion and improve the efficiency of our roadways. So I don't think it's an all-or-nothing situation, and especially since in today's newspaper, reporter Theo Douglas wrote an article about how the City Council has had to reduce the 2016 budget by 1.4 million. We know that diminishing revenues is a real concern in this city, and we need to look for all the ways that we can find in order to make sure our tax dollars are going as far as possible. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Commissioner Strong.
Just wanted to say that the Road Runners are playing tonight at CSUB, and if you started 30 minutes ago, so we've got to get out of here. But I wanted to commend the CSUB Athletic Department. They had a record number of students make it on the dean's list, and I'm very proud of my daughter was one of those kids, so thanks, bye.
Say your name. Say your name.
Whitney Strong was All-Western Athletic Conference for academic, All-Western Athletic Conference soccer player. So, thanks.
Good job. Any other comments? Seeing none, we're adjourned. Thank you and good night.